What you're saying is to try to find somebody donating $2,500?
We don't have time to do the ordinance thing, do we?
No, we don't. We don't have time to do the ordinance.
Not if you're trying to-
You want to do this July 20th.
Try to do it shortly, no way.
Yeah. Okay, we'll just do it without City Fund. We'll get it done somehow. I hate going around asking people for donations when we're trying to hit them up for a capital campaign at the same time. It's kind of difficult to testify.
Okay, we'll check with John August, see if he has any money.
He's been in on the meeting.
Maybe he can bring us a little up.
We'll get it. Somehow, we'll get it.
Yep.
So, we'll just do it without City.
Can you foundation make that?
No. Okay, one thing real quick. Our next meeting is on July the 21st, which is a Tuesday. Time to find out that's on the same day as the 4-H Parade down to Monroe. I'm not running for election, but some of you guys are. Does that cause a conflict for you guys? Do you guys want to go change the meeting to a different date? Or... It's up to you guys. I'm out of this one.
We've got two mayor candidates.
I will be at the 4-H Parade that night.
On that night? Okay. So, do we want to change the meeting now? That is the question.
Problem with me on that is I have a commitment. Monday night also, so if you change the meeting, I can't make Monday. I can meet Wednesday, but not Monday. And I hate you to change the meeting just for me. I don't know Tyler or Matt, where you want to be in this or not, but...
Based on what? If we move the meeting or not?
Yes.
Based on what now?
Whether or not we would do it.
Move Tuesday's meeting, yes, I would participate in the parade.
Okay. It's up to you guys, I don't care. That probably is something that council meeting, Tim. We'll discuss that here in a minute.
Why, are you moving the Board of Works and Council?
Yes.
So, the Board of Works would need to decide that, and then Council would need to...
I'll make a motion to change the Board of Works to Wednesday.
Which is the 22nd.
Doing the same.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
For me.
Well, and that's the thing. For the additional preparation.
I'm sorry. Since Senator Redskin, they asked me to come in a tent, so...
They asked me?
Yeah, they asked me to.
That was nice of them.
But I won't be here on the 22nd.
Can you be your Tuesday? I could be your Tuesday. Can you be your Tuesday?
I have a hard time skipping a council meeting and going to a parade.
Well, if we don't have a council meeting... We're going to have enough to do business.
We only need three.
Okay.
With Tyler on it. Sorry. You're going to the 4-H Parade?
We can. We can move it to Monday, have two people in the Board of Works meeting.
Yeah.
And just not have ten.
Okay, Monday's fine with me.
Monday's fine.
I prefer you.
Okay, let's go Monday.
Monday.
And I can see, well, I changed my Monday meeting, but I don't think it's...
Two, seven, twenty. Okay.
You're changing the Board of Works.
Meeting to Monday, July 20th.
July 20th, okay. So, this additional appropriation, and I probably can't get done for that meeting, because I have to advertise it 10 days prior to the meeting. So, if you want to do it, I'll just do it in August. Is that okay?
That's fine. Remind me of that's what we... Put it on the agenda. Okay. Yeah. Board of Works and the City Council. We have a... Yeah, right, yeah. Make a motion to adjourn.
City Council. Motion to adjourn again.
Oh, you did already? I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
No, second, second, second.
Thank you, guys, sorry. Okay, we'll close that meeting, we'll open up the City Council meeting. Call the meeting to order, we'll have roll call, please.
You're in the game again.
Phyllis?
Kim Collier?
Here.
Bill Crowe?
Here.
Matt Dyer?
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes of the June 16th meeting were emailed. Do we have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed?
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Tim, I should have brought you up. Just got with you before. Did you look at ordinance for the code book?
Mm-hmm.
You got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excuse me, I'm just going to steal your code book. This is the new code book. Big fat thing here, it's got all the rules in it, so... We just had it redone. I'm sure as we move forward, it's going to be an ongoing process to keep it updated. What we do is we change... We send down any changes we have to the publishing firm, and then they make the changes and do all of that, so...
Can we come across many?
We come across some. There's a few things in there that's going to be changed, but it's a heck of a lot better off than we were three months ago, put it that way. So, Tim, prepare an ordinance for this to basically accept everything that's in this code book.
Right. Really, what you're doing is you're kind of... It's a combination of things. You're revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling ordinances, both the existing ordinances and the number of changes it made that are being incorporated into this as we went through with department head meetings. So, this ordinance basically adopts this document in its current form. The... What it does is it identifies the code as the... And this is going to be called the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015. The last time that there was a codification of the ordinances, it was done in 2007. And so, it's time to do it. We've had a lot of changes. So, this is kind of updating it. It's going to make it something that's more accessible. It's going to be easier to amend as time goes forward because of the way they're doing it now compared to the way it was done previously. And so, the adoption basically will go into effect once this is finally adopted. So, typically, you do ordinances where you adopt it on first and second reading, you table it for third and final reading. If you wanted to do all three in one meeting, you can suspend the rules and do third and final reading in the same meeting. That's entirely up to council. Once the council has adopted it on all three readings and the mayor has approved it, then it goes into effect immediately. Okay? So, and then the ordinance itself just attaches the table of contents that identifies the various matters that are addressed in the body of the ordinance, the Code of Ordinances itself.
Any questions?
Yeah, do we want to do two or three?
Three.
Get out of the way.
As you desire, we're done. That's fine. We can talk on all three.
You ready for motion?
Okay, need to... Motion to introduce ordinance number 2015-9.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2015-9 in its first reading by short title?
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance number 2015-9, short title. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which enacts a Code of Ordinances for the city of Decatur, Indiana, revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling certain existing or new general ordinances of the city of Decatur, Indiana, dealing with subjects embraced in such Code of Ordinances, and which declares an emergency regarding its effective date.
Make a motion for passage of ordinance 2015-9 on its first reading.
Second. Motion second, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes.
Make a motion that ordinance 2015-9 be placed in its second reading by short title?
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance number 2015-9, short title. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which enacts a Code of Ordinances for the city of Decatur, Indiana, revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling certain existing or new general ordinances of the city of Decatur, Indiana, dealing with subjects embraced in such Code of Ordinances, and which declares an emergency regarding its effective date.
I move for passage of ordinance 2015-9 on its second reading.
Second. Motion second, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2015-9 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance number 2015-9, short title. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which enacts a Code of Ordinances for the city of Decatur, Indiana, revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling certain existing or new general ordinances of the city of Decatur, Indiana, dealing with subjects embraced in such Code of Ordinances, and which declares an emergency regarding its effective date.
I move for adoption of ordinance 2015-9. It's third reading.
Second. Motion second, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-9 is adopted. Okay, thank you. We've been discussing the last few months since we moved into this building, what to do with the old city hall. We did sort of notice out that it was for sale, and I think that was the first step in the process. We did not receive any interest as far as offers for that building. We did see some interest, but no offers that were given us. So, the next step is to schedule a public hearing for information from the public. Is that basically it, Tim?
Yes. You... The next step, once you've gone through the bidding process, and you have no bids that you've accepted or have received no bids, then you have the option of either going through the rebidding process again, or you can list it with a realtor, or offer it for sale through a public auction. But before you do either of those, you first have to hold a public hearing to get public input on whether to dispose of the property and the manner to do it. So, I would recommend that you schedule a public hearing at your first meeting in August, I think it's August 4th. That'll give us sufficient time to get the notice advertised in the paper of the public hearing. And at that time, it'll also give you some additional time to think through this, to make a decision ultimately after the public hearing. You don't have to do it immediately. You can give it some thought after the public hearing. That's a procedural step that you have to take before you can either list it or sell it to a public auction.
At that public hearing, we do not make a decision if we're going to sell it. No decisions whatsoever. It's just a matter of taking...
Receiving public input.
So, I'll schedule the public hearing for August 4th. That gives us plenty of time to get the legal notice out about the public hearing, so...
You need a motion on that, Tim?
I would do a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Tim, here's something I didn't tell you about, but you need to read this, please. This is called the United Way Proclamation. It's official proclamation. Thanks, Tim. There's no trick words in there. I apologize, I didn't get Tim this ahead of time.
You're just declaring the United Way Day.
Right, that's right.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Read it.
I have to read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're our reader.
All right, this is the official proclamation to whom all these presidents may come greetings. Whereas the city of Decatur hopes that all its citizens enjoy healthy, meaningful lives, and whereas the United Way advances the common good by creating opportunities for a better life for everyone, and whereas the United Way focuses on education, income, and health, which are the building blocks for a good quality of life, because we all win when a child succeeds in school, when families are financially stable, and when people are in good health, and whereas it takes every part of the community, individuals, businesses, and organizations, to supply the passion, expertise, and resources needed to create lasting change for the better, and whereas last year Adams County citizens generally contributed their volunteer energies as well as more than $200,000 to the United Way, thereby investing in programs and initiatives that improve lives and build stronger communities, and whereas the United Way kicks off its annual campaign every year in order to support those efforts, now therefore, I, John Schultz, Mayor of the city of Decatur, do hereby proclaim the day of July 17, 2015, as United Way Day throughout the city of Decatur, and commend this observance to all our citizens. And when this will arrive here and to set my hand and cause the corporate seat of the city of Decatur to be affixed as 7th of July, 2015, signed, Mayor John Schultz.
Thank you, Tim. You do that a lot faster than I would have.
You need to put your seal on there.
I do, I will.
Okay.
You guys want to copy this? Okay, thanks, Tim. We had a request from the Parks Department, really Chris Crowe. He runs an event called Iron Kid Triathlon. If you've never attended it, it's worth going watching, it really is. It's a neat event. It's going to be held on July 14th, on a Tuesday evening, a week from tonight. And I think the event actually starts at 7:00, but they need to close Monroe Street down, and the police have always been pretty good about helping them out, closing the street and kind of monitoring the traffic. It doesn't last very long. The street's only closed for maybe a half hour at the most, so... But we need officially permission to let Chris close that street.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you, Greg, for helping them out. Redevelopment report. Every year, Phyllis has to do a report by state rules that we detail revenues received, expenses paid, fund balances as of December 31st, the amount and maturity date for all outstanding obligations. Let me just go back up. Revenues received during 2014, zero. Expenses paid during 2014, $500. Fund balances as of December 31st, $606.74. The amount of maturity date for all outstanding obligations, zero. The amount paid on outstanding obligation, zero. That's basically the information that we have to provide, and needs council approval. I won't want to make one other note. The $606.74 that's available as of December 31st is now down to like $124. So, there's not $124 in there, of course. There's another item I'm going to bring up here in a minute. But we need to make this a matter of record, that Phyllis did provide this information as required by the statute.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. That leads me into the redevelopment commission. Like I said, there's only $124, $28 left in there. In the past, the city council has okayed funds to help the redevelopment commission get through their business, to have some funds to pay bills and things like that. They're anticipating that they're going to receive some funds in June of 2016, so almost a year from now. But in order to, I would like to provide them with some funding to get them through that time. And again, Phyllis informed me today that according to the state rules, this is a loan, so they're going to pay this back to us. So, I would like to make a request that we fund the redevelopment commission, $5,000 to be refunded upon their receiving of funds from the county fund. I explained that okay to everybody?
Yes.
So, I'm asking for it, and this would come out of the rainy day fund, so...
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Well, we all made it through the flood. I don't know how some days, but we did, so I really need to thank, and I think the whole city needs to thank, the volunteers that we had to step forward. God damn, they just... You give out a column, they're there. That's what makes us a solid community already. But they really did, and it's a great tribute to them. The state also brought about some issues that we need to address down the road. Do we need another sandbagging machine? We need to look at things like that. Do we want to have a little celebration, not funded through the city, but to help thank the volunteers for stepping forward? I think that'd be a great idea. If we can get that funded privately, then we should move forward with that. Along with that, Nate Rumschler, our city engineer, has been in contact with the Monmy River Basin up in Fort Wayne, and we were involved with the Monmy River Basin, and Roger Gage was really involved with them after the 2003 flood. We bought out 52 homes. Hey, that was great, because this year, we didn't have to sandbag 52 homes. So, it really was nice to have that out of the way. Some other residences have flooded, and so Nate is going to send out a letter to these individuals, residents, to see if they are interested in a buyout. We don't know if we'll get the FEMA funds or not, but, you know, we're going to try it, and...
Give me a copy of the letter. Sharon's going to be putting mailers together.
Give my copy to media.
Mayor, is it 52 or 72?
Well, Roger, it was 52 homes, wasn't it?
We'll get that letter.
Yeah, there was 52 that was blown out, there was...
20 before that, a couple of years before that?
Yeah, well, and there were three of them that was elevated, and there was like nine that we blew out.
Okay, yeah. So, about 64 total, that...
64.
Yeah, total. So, anyhow, we don't know if FEMA funds are going to be available, but this is the first step in the process, if there are FEMA funds, if we qualify. And we're going to work with Monmy River Basin in this proposed grant.
It's fully a voluntary system. There's no guarantee that we buy a home if you volunteer. We have, the city has the judgment as far as their judgment as far as who would be selected based on money to get, but we won't get any money unless we have volunteers step up and fill the application forms.
So, if they're interested, they contact City Hall?
Yeah, there's information about...
Information in the letter.
In the letter.
There's copies of the letter and the form that'll be here in Roger's office. They can come in and fill them out. They need to be the owner of the property, obviously, but they fill it out, and then it goes into our application. I have to come there and all the hating we talked about out there.
Okay. Any questions on that? Again, we don't know if there's money available. We're going to try, and so they don't become a headache. The next flood. There will be another one. We were talking about possibly the July 21st meeting, which is our next scheduled meeting, changing that. We have a conflict with our city council meeting being the same night as the 4-H Parade. Some people want to change, or attend the 4-H Parade, and it's been recommended we change it from Tuesday night, July 21st, to Monday night, July 20th. Well, the Board of Works has already rescheduled theirs to July 20th, so City Council can also change theirs to Monday, July the 20th. So, is there any questions you want to address? It's more of a convenience thing, so anybody else up here want to attend, or anybody out there that want to attend both the city council and the 4-H Parade, they can do so. We need a motion to do that.
Make a motion to move our next meeting to the 20th. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Another item is local option income tax. That was passed by the county council to help fund their jails, so that brought funds to the city. We share in some of those funds. And the idea is that those funds will be used for public safety. That's what we're after, is the public safety. And the process would be to spend some dollars from the police and the fire department for 2015, and then we'd have some funds left over, even after spending. Partially $424,000 in low revenue that's going to be seen for 2015. We have some expenditures of about $294,000, so that's going to leave us about $130,000 for 2015. We would have to make an additional appropriation, because that is not in our current budget. Phyllis would have to do the appropriation and get permission from DLGF, the Department of Local Government Finance. But that's what it's for, is for public safety. In 2015, it would help pay for the bond on the new police department. It would help pay for radios that are needed for the police, police cars, some additional parking at the new spot. We find out that we didn't really have enough parking at the new place. We're going to put some money in that. Police lockers, we didn't have money for that. On the fire side, we have some money for the concrete aprons going into the south part of the building. There's some communication equipment needs to be bought, some air packs that we continually buy every year, so we're updated on air packs for our firemen. And we have some cylinder replacements that need, and then we have some phones that need to be, and water rescue dry suits. So, all of those things add up to about $294,000, which would leave us about $130,000 for 2015. Again, that was never appropriated, so Phyllis would have to do an additional appropriation for that, so... I handed it out, everybody, and media, I'll give you guys a copy of this to kind of show what they're doing. But we need council approval to move forward with additional appropriation.
So moved. Thanks.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
That will require a public hearing, and we already have one scheduled for August 4th, so you need to make sure that you coordinate the two, so they're not set at the same time.
But they could be the same evening.
Yes.
Yeah. That's kind of what I have done. August 4th for both of them. Good, okay. Okay, department heads? Roger?
No, I'll have anything to add.
Nothing? Greg?
There'll be more, thank you.
Wes?
I had two vehicles that I would like to advertise and want to get rid of. We want to do that with some other departments that have some equipment access.
I think that requires us to have a notice, a public notice goes out, so Phyllis would have to publish that. So, anybody that has another equipment or vehicle, maybe we can get them all on one public notice, huh? Yeah.
So, if it... The old tanker and 2003 UConn Center.
What, the old tanker's a 1970?
Is that the one in the 70s?
Wow, yeah, okay. I'd say it serves its purpose as a battle.
It's worth more scrap than it is.
Okay. So, are you asking permission to do that?
Well, we pursue with that, or I don't know, Jeremy's got some stuff later that he wants to... Should I just get rid of the original UConn, so... Probably more quickly we could expedite that.
What's the process, Phyllis? How long does it take? You have to give a legal notice out? Okay, so that takes some time. Can you have that done for the next meeting? July the 20th now. Can you have that done for the next meeting, July the 20th now?
I have to advertise it twice for that.
Okay, so we're going to go to August 4th, or is that, you want to go to the next meeting?
I could try to...
Okay.
And that'll be Board of Works.
Oh, that's Board of Works, I'm sorry. August 4th.
I will probably have a couple, but it will be till toward the end of the year.
Okay, well, we'll go through the process again then. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Les?
Thanks to all the people that helped out during the flood. Great volunteers and...
Yep, yep. Thank you. Good. Nate?
I've sent out to camp for a river. This is just regarding grass flipping. What we found with a number of our localized flooding, it wasn't river related, was that people have been putting enough grass out into the inlet, so we ended up sending crews out, jets, and cleaning up after them. So this is just a little summary. This has got some information from I.D. regarding essentially what our stormwater ordinance says. Grass flipping is considered a pollutant, so theoretically, if it's a nuisance, we can use the stormwater ordinance as a tool to deal with that, so whether it's fines or whatnot. So I want to make sure you have these.
How is it being sent out?
I sent this out via email.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? Ann? Daniel? I didn't ask you, I knew he's coming up here.
I'm trying to make it quick. Several things here. We'll tie it up for the last meeting. Pass out a proposed paving list for 2015. Kind of explain some things. There is some other projects that is going to happen that's not on this list. As you read down through here, there's several areas. A few of these areas are places where we've done work at in the last year, water main replacement, sewer, system installations and such. Number seven, the country rep road was damaged from the Monroe Street construction project, so that's definitely a must. This is budget money. It's money that you guys approved in 2015 budget. There is a little bit of a balance left. What we're going to do is probably around August, is go around and start patching a lot of the concrete streets in addition to this. There are several of the concrete streets, like 17th Street, some of those may, even out of Tim's neighborhood, that they definitely need a lot of attention. So this is just a rough project list that will happen probably towards the end of this month or first part of August.
Okay, good.
But the sidewalk project on Winchester Street is, will be completed probably another week or week and a half. So that is moving along in and out of the rainstorm here. But just a couple of little informational things. End dot is chipping and sealing 224 from State Road 1 to 224. There are Wendy's, or excuse me, back to 13th Street. That is not a city project, I want everybody to understand that. We're probably going to get some calls for...
So it's just from Wendy's intersection west?
To State Road 1.
Okay.
I just want everybody to...
When will they do that?
They're working on it.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Jeremy, speaking of 224, do you know if Endot has any plans to repave?
Through town.
Through town? Thank you.
That's also on our list. Also, I've been in conversation with Brooks Construction, and next week, it was supposed to happen this week, but it just has not due to the holiday and the weather. Brooks Construction will be patching 13th Street again. You remember, probably four or five years ago, Perco came in and cut all the little patches out. That has been awarded to Brooks again. It's a $1.8 million project. That project will go on until probably, they're thinking, late October. So be aware when you're traveling in that area, there will be some lane modifications and such as we go. Our Monroe Street project is almost to completion. We're looking probably towards the end of the month. We'd be down a bunch of list items. Perco will be back in town this week to start all driveways and sidewalks and such. I've met with, every two weeks, we have progress meetings. Everyone's been very happy with the way it's went so far with coordination. Like I said here, our total goal is by November, August, when school starts, but we're looking more towards the end of July here, before that's completed. The last couple of days, we've been working on Adam Street from Line Street to 7th. That is also another combined sewer area that was missed during all the CSO projects.
Surprise, surprise.
So we have been working there the last two days. We probably have three to four more days left to go. Adam Street will close tomorrow until completion. I'm hoping by Friday night, we can get it open back up. So I posted it with everybody late last week, so everyone has a proper notice. Back to Ken's question about Monroe Street. I've talked with several Endot officials, reference the condition of Monroe Street. My first response I got from them was not on 18-month radar, but I've made a few other calls. I had some other calls, back and forth conversations. They are trying to get something maybe late this fall. But I also contacted the district today, and the ones I talked into district could not confirm and or deny if that was going to happen. I think they're waiting on some other projects to be completed to see if they, see if they're going to have the money to do that. They know the condition of it. They know that it needs addressed sooner than later, so they said that they would try to do what they, what they can do to get that taken care of.
Monroe Street, Highway 224, from...
Is there any questions about that list, concerns surrounding?
Highway 27 east.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy, very much. Thanks. A lot going on there. Melissa, do you have anything? You okay? All right. Comments from the city council members? Anybody? I don't mind wanting to bring up at this time.
Johnny, we ever heard anything, you know, we talked a while back, well, a long time ago, and then recently, about Spur Street problem. Has there been any movement on this?
No, there really hasn't. And part of the reason is the most likely source to go through that is the redevelopment commission. Well, redevelopment commission didn't receive any funds, so there's really nothing they could do. But we're still, it's still on the radar, and so we still are trying to get something done, and we might do something through a different source, but right now, it's just an idea. We haven't really done anything formally. Ken, you got anything to add on that? We were involved because that included part of our stellar program.
Well, I guess I'm just, I mean, is there a reason that we shouldn't move forward pursuing alternative routes aside from redevelopment commission?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I think we should.
So, I mean, what that would mean would be we'd have to get appraisals, right?
If you're going to pursue properties, you have to pass a resolution expressing interest in the properties. You have to identify them, and then you have to have two appraisers, two appraisals, to determine what the maximum...
Two licensed appraisals.
Licensed appraisers, to determine what the maximum price that you can offer.
Because we've done the phase ones and twos on those properties.
Right. And then Cam says phase one and twos, that's an environmental study that has to be done on properties if a government agency is interested, so...
I mean...
So we may want to look at that, yeah, see if alternatives are out there.
Because, I mean, at this point, we're still not...
We're not moving forward.
But even if we got the appraisal, we're still not making, which is the same thing we did with the shape of building, right? And the whole process, and ultimately, that didn't work out for us. But I guess, is there a reason that we should not move forward on? I mean, to me, redevelopment piece isn't going to come through for...
A year at least, minimum. It could be two years, I don't know. The only other way would be use other funds that we have, the city has at their disposal. You can use other funds for that, so, yeah. Money wise, you know, it wouldn't surprise me. You're talking $150,000. I'm just pulling out a number out of midair, so not sure.
Well, it depends on, we know oftentimes it may not be worth what they're willing, they're wanting to get for.
I mean, if this is the time, maybe we could put some money in the budget for 2016 to address that.
And before then, should we go ahead, proceed with the appraisal?
Appraisals. I would like to see us move forward with the appraisals, even if it's a several-year effort in getting those bought with regular city monies or redevelopment money.
Yeah, it's probably, you know...
It's not going to happen in a year.
We identified our 20-year plan. Right, we can't do it at once, but we could maybe pick one or two off.
I mean, it's included, what else have I got to say? Well, I'll get that. It's in our stellar application that we are actively pursuing that.
Right.
And I think it is important that we do that actively.
Pursue.
So if we're at the stage where we're simply saying, sounds like resolution...
I just need to know which specific properties, so if somebody can get me a list of those, then I can identify them the way it needs to be in the resolution.
All right. We'll move forward. Okay, good. Anything else?
Only thing I was going to bring up was the fact that we, you did take and submit our stellar application...
We did.
On Tuesday of last week.
June 30th, it was there.
So that's exciting news. It was a lot of effort at the last couple of weeks there.
Well, we, yeah.
But...
Here we are fighting a flood, and we still have to get all that stuff done, and get it to Indianapolis, and now the next...
Yeah, I mean, kind of what the update is, is that we're all working hard towards January, I'm sorry.
July.
July 30th, which is the state visit. And so Melissa's leading that charge, and she's done a great job organizing that, so expect a little more information about, but they're going to be here, 9:00 to 12:00 on the 30th. Going for our best foot forward and share even more about our progress. I think that's the exciting thing, is we can show what we have done over the last year, since they were last here, show them our revised plan, and then we find out at State Fair.
On the 17th of August.
17th of August.
At the State Fair, we'll find out.
So...
And then we celebrate on the 18th of August.
Through the next five years.
Right. Okay, anything else? Thank you, Cam. Thank you. Comments from the public? Alan?
You were talking about parking on 7th Street for the police station. You have any idea ballpark figure, how many square feet we're talking there?
Jeremy, do you remember?
Has not, has not probably been determined.
Yeah.
There's been no design.
It's going to be off-street parking, to answer that question. I mean, it's going to be off-street parking. How many square feet, I'm not sure.
Well, it'll be...
It'll go to the south.
South.
South, is that right, Jeremy? To the south of the current lot?
Current lot is south to the fire station.
And another question, are we, you still on track for the sidewalks and lights on 7th Street?
Yes, yes, yes. We'll see that done this year.
Why you got to have it shut down? Can you work on a railroad track?
We can't touch a railroad track.
We wish.
And they are, they're more difficult to work with than for...
All the tracks are getting pretty bad.
Washington's bad, yeah. We need to bring it to their attention. We need to get our partner, they won't listen to the city. Railroad is pretty independent people.
Yeah, it's getting pretty bad, yeah.
But they really...
Bunky might be able to...
They always help us. Yeah, Washington's pretty bad.
It's bad, yeah.
Okay.
The problem you were talking about during the Board of Works meeting with this raw sewage, is that, would that have anything to do with the smell out there by Walmart?
Well, the areas we're looking at, there's five different areas on the outskirts of Decatur. They're just outside the city limits.
Right.
That's not, that's not one of them. That's not one of them.
You don't have any complaints about smelling of Walmart?
You need to talk to the right people.
Well, I...
Well, I think, if...
What you're talking about, you know, is that, isn't there storm, wadun area there?
I don't know. I have no idea. They just know...
Oh, people, if people have an issue, please call either Ann, or Nate, or myself, you know, and just, hey, we'll try to address it.
But that area is far enough away from what you were talking about.
That's a good half mile away.
Okay.
Yes. Anything else? Anyone else? Mr. Becker, you got something?
As you mentioned earlier, that there will be probably a lot of people come to the celebration and lift one hand to help, but if anybody gets, I'm going to lift it both hands to the Lord to pray for that whole thing.
Sure. We sure appreciate it, too. Mr. Bill? Tim?
Yes.
Oh. Go ahead.
Board of Works approved the lease agreement with the Arts Council for the use of the old police station on 3rd Street, but the statute requires that the fiscal body also approve it. The lease terms are, it's a temporary lease, it's a temporary arrangement. They're hoping, part of what we're doing with Stellar is ultimately to provide a permanent spot, but in the interim, this gets them out of a situation where it's not the most desirable and into a little bit better connotations. Because they're a not-for-profit entity, we don't have to go through the statutory process of determining what the fair rental value is for the property. We have the right to rent it out for nominal amount. Nominal amount is a dollar a month. It's for a three-month period commencing July 15th and running through October 15th. Could be extended for three-month terms thereafter unless one of the parties chooses to terminate the lease. The, because the Arts Council really has no funding available currently, the city will initially pay the utilities. Eventually, that could change if the Arts Council had the means to do that itself. There are other provisions that are typical in lease arrangements, but those are primarily the terms. So I would recommend that the council approve this. It will also be approved by the Park Board. There's some confusion about who actually is the legal owner. It's either the Park Board or the city, so it will have both bodies approve it, and then the Arts Council can approve it as well.
Good. So we need a motion to...
Approve the lease agreement.
Approve the lease agreement, and I can sign on the city's behalf.
You and fellas would sign it on behalf of the city. So moved.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Anything else, Tim? No. Fellas?
I just need to make the ordinance with advertise for the park boundary voting fund. I just need to make it a matter of record.
That's more than 2015-8. Just make it a matter of record that it has been advertised properly.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Claims.
Making motions, claiming the fate is advertised.
Second.
Motion second, pay the claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you very much.